Call to order this regular council meeting of the Village of Ashcroft Council for Monday, February the 24th, 2020. I move to adopt the agenda as presented unless there are any errors or omissions.
Your worship, Mayor Tellerico, to be added under delegation.
Pardon me?
To add Mayor Tellerico.
Oh, okay, and to add Mayor Teller- oh, add Mayor Tellerico to the delegations list.
And also your motion, bringing forward out of committee the whole for the recommendation.
Under new business?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So move the agenda as amended. Do I have a second or councillor Davenport, thank you very much. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held Monday, January 27th, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I move that we adopt the regular meeting of council minutes for Monday, January 27th. Second councillor Anstead, thank you. Any discussion on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Any errors or omissions for the minutes of the committee of the whole for Monday, January 27th? Move that we council adopt those minutes. Second councillor Anderson, thank you very much. On the question, if there's no discussion, all in favor, opposed, carried. And any errors or omissions for the minutes of the special meeting of council planning session on February the 10th? Seeing none, I move that we adopt those minutes. Second councillor Anstead, on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Delegations, our first delegation is from Desert Sands Community School. We have Vivian McLean, Allison Spooner, and Gabrielle LaChapelle from the SOGI Alliance. Ladies, the floor is yours. Oh, we only have two?
No Gabrielle.
No Gabrielle, all right, we have Allison and Vivian. Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Where would you like us?
Wherever you're most comfortable, many people stand behind the podium. If you'd rather move around, that's perfectly fine. Would you prefer the lights off, or is this?
There we go. I'm all good, I like it. All right. So we're just kind of here, we're the co-leaders of the SOGI Alliance within our school, and we're just kind of here to talk to you guys about who we are and what we do as a group. My name is Vivian McLean, I use she/her pronouns, and I am in grade 12.
I'm Allison, I also use she/her pronouns, and I'm in grade 11 as well.
Okay, so one of the first things that we wanted to talk to you guys is about the meaning of the name of our group. So SOGI stands for sexual orientation, gender identity, and we chose to call our group SOGI Alliance because the name is all-inclusive. Everyone has a sexual orientation and a gender identity, and that way by calling our group this, we are not excluding anyone.
Also, a quick rundown of our history, we were formed in 2017, '18, as a gay straight alliance for like four days by Skylar and Paul. We then changed the name. We've done a couple of projects around our school, and underwent a change of leadership this year as Skylar graduated last year, and we're currently working on a couple of projects as well, which we'll share later on.
Thank you for doing the clicking, by the way. You're doing excellent. So, one of our biggest projects last year was that we created as a group, a bunch of posters with facts and statistics and definitions of LGBTQ+ information, and we put them up all around our school in order to raise awareness and to kind of normalize these ideas. And we just have a couple examples up there, I'll read them out just for anybody that would like it. It says, "Tap of transgender youth in B.C. report being bullied in school." The other one says, "Cisgender: when a person's gender identity matches the body they were born with."
So our presentations, we've done a couple. Our first big one, we spoke in response to a local church at a school board meeting, some of you guys that have been there. We just want to reinforce the idea of safe spaces, safe spaces are such as our group, and the importance of having SOGI 123, which is how it's incorporated into the curriculum, how it's really important for students and staff, and quite helpful. And yeah, so we presented the school district staff, like a pro day as well, just kind of reinforcing the same ideas. That was myself, Skylar, and Vip, and we just kind of talked about what we found was helpful, and what teachers could do, and staff in the school to make it just a safe and welcoming place for everyone.
So some of the things that we're working on right now, so we're in the works to create a school-wide mural, and it's going to be made with handprints, and we're going to have the words "everyone is welcome," and we're going to try and include all the students in the school so that they all feel like really involved. We're also connecting and meeting with other SOGI groups in our area, so we just recently went on a trip to Whistler with the Lilowet SOGI group to see the Pride Parade there, and we went to the art gallery, and we had like a really, like a lot of fun bonding time. It's really good to meet with other groups that have like similar visions, right? And then we also, we've made connections with the Valley View Group. I'm not entirely sure what title they go by, but they're also like a SOGI or GSA group, and we've made connections with them. We are also, we've been contacted and asked if we would be willing to help repaint the Rainbow Crosswalk in downtown Ashcroft, and we're super excited for when that will happen. Hopefully, like March, April, sometime in the spring, when it's all nice outside.
Before you graduate.
Yeah, yeah, in June, that would be nice. And we've asked, like as a partnership, if the village would be willing to consider making a donation for efforts in that, and we have submitted a form, so everybody knows.
So we just want to say like the importance, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, especially in our school. So for me, the main goal is like a safe place for all of our kids, because we're a K to 12, so we're getting a lot of kids, and we come in from a wide range of areas, like I almost live in Clinton, so you get a really, really big group of people, and I think it's super important to have a place where you can go and you can freely express yourselves, especially when you might not get that at home or in like other groups in the community that we have. We also wanted to create an accurate representation of who, I guess, like the SOGI kids are in our school, because you see, like media and stuff can be very like homogenous, like it's all the same, and we're all pretty different, and we want to show that and represent ourselves as well. We also want to reinforce the education, like with our poster campaign and with this, we're sharing who we are, as well as mentor a lot of the younger kids, a lot of them are in really unfortunate situations at home maybe, and just having someone at school or wherever that's safe and you know that is really, really helpful, especially when they're closer to your age.
Yeah, so then we wanted to ask if you guys have any questions, and so at this point we usually say, you know, as long as you ask with good intentions, that's what really matters, and if, you know, if you have questions, it's best to ask people who are comfortable with them and who are saying like, here we are, if you have any questions, we're totally willing to answer, so. Just in case anybody has any questions, here we are.
Does anyone on council have any questions? First of all, thank you ladies for coming out and presenting, it was wonderful to have you, I've been asking for a while, I know, it's like grade 12 year, you've got nothing going on, I know, I totally understand.
It's okay, you're our priority, Barbara.
Very excited about the Rainbow Crosswalk, which, I'm glad it went in, but it was a bit of a disappointment, the colors were nowhere near as vivid as we all, I think, pictured in our heads at the time, so really looking forward to getting that, getting that repainted come the, come the spring and getting it freshened up. So does anyone have any questions, comments, Vivian, Allison?
I think you're curious, so we're here, so.
I do have a question, how many people are sort of in the SOGI Alliance, like the core group, shall we say?
So we are kind of a come-in-and-go-out and flow group, because our goal is to be really welcoming and accepting, so we're not going to force people to come or not come or anything like that, but we have, I think, like on our trip, we took about eight kids?
Yeah, we took eight kids on the trip, and then we've got, like Viv and I are the ones that run the least, we're the most consistent.
We have about a dozen that usually come to the meetings, and then like some more that come in and out when they can.
And that's like a really small representation of like LGBT kids, like in our school, like I'll tell you right now, there's so many more that just like, that's not their thing is the meeting, but like, it's really good that we have that there, just in case, you know.
Yeah, just as a part group and, and, yes.
Right, so they know, they know you're there if they need to.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
And what sort of, is it a specified age range, or is it really anyone, or what's the sort of age of the, the people who come to the meetings?
So we haven't actually set out a specified age range, but usually the, I think it's
like an eight-plus general?
Yeah, usually it's, it's high school, right?
It's just the way, like, yeah, our school's separated, because they have like the elementary and then the high school in, and it's, I think, grade seven is where it kind of like divides to those of the kids that are most common.
So for the most part, we have like grade seven to 12 all the way through.
Any more questions, comments? And you have put in, oh, councillor Davenport. I just wanted to say it's inspiring to have you here, thank you so much for representing.
Thank you, we're glad to be here.
It's awesome to be here, yeah.
No, it's, I know, I promise when Tim graduated, five, eight, nine years ago, I know there were a couple of students there who would have, I think, really benefited from something like this, I think they had a difficult time and they had no one to talk to, at least no one at the school, and as you mentioned, you know, important to have, I think, to have someone close to your own age, because adults can be very well-meaning, but their lived experience is very different to the experience you're living, so having someone who is, who's close to you in age and has a better feel for what you're going through and what you're facing, I think that's really important, and it's, I think it's a really great thing to have at our school, so thank you for, and to everyone else for providing that and keeping it going, and I hope that when you two graduate, it'll keep on going.
Thank you, me also, too.
Good. Well, thank you very much for presenting, and look forward to considering your request, not at tonight's meeting, but at probably our next council meeting in March.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we have a second delegation, and that is Mayor Tellerico and CFO Christina Martini from the Village of Cash Creek, made the long trek from Cash Creek.
Thank you very much, Mayor Roden, councillors, the delegation. As we spoke about asset management, I would like to continue on that topic, and my, my main thing is that we are two communities that are very, very close to each other. I came from the coast where, you know, just driving to the theater, you have to be in traffic for 45 minutes. Here, Cash Creek is 10 minutes away from Ashcroft, and I think that we, as communities, could be united and do something together to benefit both communities, eventually even Clinton, still the communities, because we are so close together that why not get our courses together, our money together, and do something, especially when it comes to big items like capital assets. I'm looking here at your critical item, probably is one of those sweet sweepers, $350,000. Why can't we buy it together and come up with an agreement where scheduling, how to use it, who has the ownership, who pays the insurance, et cetera, et cetera, so these things can be done, and as communities, we, both communities could benefit out of those agreements. I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up to see if the council is willing to consider at this point in time such a collaboration and eventually come to some terms. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Tellerico?
Thank you. How much time if I go ahead?
Depends, depends on how good you are at facing angry crowds.
Oh, pretty good, that's part of being a politician. Thanks, Yogi. Thanks Christina as well. Every time there's a provincial or federal budget, you can't help but think about the plight of rural British Columbia. So thank you, Ashcroft, for allowing Yogi to develop the asset management plan and works, because it's going to benefit us tremendously if we can adapt and carry on with his hard work. With that, to reiterate what Christina said, the, we want to move ahead and develop something our council has given us the directive to, to come forth and meet with your council when you see fit, to discuss the options and come up with a plan of where we can share facilities, services, ideas, and through the asset management, that's an example, a very strong one, as well as any other areas that we can benefit as a joint, two joint unions. In closing, because I know it's going to be a long night for everyone, and we've had our council meeting prior, frugal came up many times during Yogi's presentation, and we used to have coffee and donuts in our, in our municipality in Cash Creek until Christina came along, and now we have coffee. Black coffee. I understand, Yogi.
Thank you very much CFO Martini and Mayor Tellerico for that presentation, and I'll want to think about, and certainly, I think I'm speaking for all of council when I say that strengthening the bonds between the communities and sharing and pooling our resources and our knowledge and our expertise, I think can only be to the benefit of both communities and by extension to the entire region.
Yes.
Because we are stronger together, and I like the idea of speaking with Mayor Swan and Clinton, because we are all very small communities with limited resources, and we're going to go further if we pool those resources and work together than if we all try and go ahead with blinders or blinkers on. So thank you very much for reaching out, I look forward to having our staff get in touch and having our councils meet and start exploring some of these ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to the next item, which is correspondence, Ashcroft Hospice Society. We have a letter from them asking for a letter of support from us. What is council's pleasure on this? Don't stab yourself, answer that. I do that, too. Councillor Anstead?
I'd like to go forth, we support with a letter of support, further application.
Thank you, do I have a second or for that? Councillor Anderson, any discussion on this? Bricks and mortar location for the hospice society, excellent idea, so a letter of support, councillor Anstead?
I think the hospice society is a very important part of life, and I think that's something that we should continue to support and be available for, especially when families are going to need these services in a time need.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this point? All right, seeing none on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.2, TNRD zoning amendment application resolution request. This is regarding rezoning out at Boston Plots for a mobile home park. I would like to move that we report back to the TNRD, giving approval of this, interests unaffected by this application, however, I would like to add a question to that, to the TNRD, asking about egress and ingress to the former mobile home park, because they want to develop both the former mobile home park and the upper level, and I just would like to ask them if they have had any thoughts about a second ingress and egress point, because that was a fact, or an idea after the 2017 wildfires with only the one exit and entrance to the mobile home park. So, second that, councillor Anstead, any discussion? I have sort of discussed it there, but that would be the only concern that I would want to have addressed at this point, is what have they done about that? Any other discussion?
Nope.
No? Seeing none then on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.3, Ashcroft Indian Band, request a letter of support for the funding to develop a walking trail plan along Cornwall Road. Councillor Anderson?
Yeah, so I support that, and so I'll make motion that we do provide that letter of support to the Ashcroft Indian Band.
Thank you very much. Second councillor Anstead, any discussion on this point? We do have the community-to-community forum coming up with them on March the 3rd, so this will undoubtedly form part of the discussion, but it would be nice to see that connection of a walking trail between us and the band, and hopefully make walking along Cornwall Road a little less dangerous than it can sometimes be. Councillor Toohey?
Thank you, Mayor Roden, I'm just wondering if, I know that we had an agenda for that meeting, if this could be added on to that agenda?
Certainly. For the community-to-community forum?
Yes, CDC, yes.
Make a note that this is something we want to discuss at that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Nope, seeing none on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.4, Clinton Annual Ball, invitation to attend the 153rd Annual Ball. And just for council, in case you can't remember, it's, it has been usual for the last few years for council to move that the mayor and a guest be, that the village purchase tickets. If that's your pleasure, that's fine, if it's not, that's fine, too. So, I'm not going to make the motion for obvious reasons.
Is the mayor available?
Councillor Toohey?
Thank you, Mayor Roden, I'd like to move that we make funds available for our mayor and guests to attend the annual Clinton Ball this year, 2016.
Thank you. Second councillor Davenport, any discussion on this? All right, seeing none on the question, then all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.5, Highland Valley Copper has issued an invitation for Mayor Roden to participate the Environmental Assessment Working Group. If it makes the decision easier, Mayor Roden is willing to sit on the Environmental Assessment Working Group, so I don't know if that makes a motion any easier or not. Councillor Anstead?
Make the motion to allow Mayor Roden to attend the environmental assessment.
Thank you. Councillor Davenport with the second, any discussion on this? Looks like it will be exceedingly technical. No discussion on the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. The Ashcroft Fall Fair, asking for a grant in aid request for this year's fall fair. Cool. Councillor Anderson?
So I will make motion that we support the Ashcroft District Fall Fair by providing them with the grant of, looks like $500?
Booking arena? Okay.
Oh, yeah, and I was looking at the backside there. And booking the arena.
All right, so a grant in aid for $500 plus their request regarding the big arena?
Yes.
All right, second that, councillor Anstead, any discussion on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So for that motion, are you suggesting that we give them the aid of $500 and then they pay for the rental of the arena?
No, we also would give them the arena, book the arena.
At no charge?
That's right.
Any further discussion? No? Councillor Toohey?
Thank you, Mayor.
They're like really tentative there, like.
Well, because I'm not too sure how you do that, to amend the, or do we vote on that first, if I think it should be something different?
If you would like to propose an amendment, then you can do that, and then we will discuss the amendment and vote on that before going back to the motion that's on the floor currently.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Which will either be amended or not.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't too clear from how I did that. So, yes, I would like to make an amendment to, to the motion that we give them a grant in aid of $500, however, that they pay for the rent of the arena.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second or for the amendment? All right, second or for the amendment? Seeing none, the amendment dies on the floor, so we are back to the original question, which is the original motion, which is grant in aid of $500 plus free use of the arena. Okay, any further discussion on that? Councillor Toohey?
Thank you, Mayor Roden, I'm just wondering what the costs of that are, because I know we have to pay staff to be there during that time, so that, that's my concern, is the cost of staffing.
De Soute?
Yes, your worship, we can, you can waive the fees for the arena rental and allow, and not waive the fees for the staff collect.
Okay. And I believe in the past, they do try, perform a benefit, you can correct me, they do try, and I think to do most of the work well, on the Friday anyway, while staff are...
Your worship, that they do come in approximately 9:00 AM in the morning, and they're gone by roughly 3:00 in the afternoon, so that we can close it during regular working hours, and then, yes, in the past, they have actually paid for the rental of the arena and for collect.
Okay, thank you. And what is the arena rental?
Here and there, report, your worship, if I can do so by there, it's approximately $1,000, they have it in their budget for $1,000 for arena rental.
Is there any further discussion? Councillor Anderson?
I just wanted to make note that last year, the Ashcroft District Fall Fair, I know, was struggling a bit with respect to getting entries, public attendance, and so on, so I think, it would be a shame to see that dwindle away, and this is one of the reasons that I support that we do everything we can to continue promoting that and providing them with the ability to make a go of it.
Thank you. No, I know that they have been struggling for some time and dwindling, and it would be a shame to see it lost. Councillor Davenport?
Reiterating, of course, that, especially, the entry fee is quite low, so trying to get, saving up on costs as much as possible. This would be an important year, I think, to move forward and get the numbers happening. We don't want to lose another event in our town, so it's important.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion then, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.7, Healthcare and Wellness Coalition, request for councillor Toohey and alternate to be appointed to the coalition, and I would move that we table this until such time in the near future, as we will be looking at all our committee appointments, and do a thorough revision and look, viewing of that at that time. Do I have a second or? Councillor Davenport, thank you, any discussion? Councillor Anderson?
Do you have any general idea when that might be?
Um, I...
Except the near future, so.
De Soute?
Next one.
Okay. There have been a couple of historic Hat Creek, for example, there's been some slight change with their, or formalization, shall we say, of their committees, their committee appointments, so. All right, any further discussion on this? On the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.8, Eddie Charlie, request support of Orange Shirt Day Private Members Bill. What is council's pleasure on this item? I would move to receive and file this letter. Do I have a second or for that? Second councillor Davenport, thank you. My reason for receiving and filing this is because I was a little bit perturbed by Mr. Charlie's use of the word "making it a national holiday." I totally am behind the ideas and the goals of Orange Shirt Day, I think naming it a holiday is a misnomer, I think holiday connotes something a lot more frivolous than what they are attempting to do here. We already hear complaints from, not complaints, but we hear laments from the Legion that people treat Remembrance Day, especially if it falls on a Monday or a Friday, not as a day... not as a day of remembrance, but as part of a three-day weekend. Council Davenport.
As far as I do know, it is supported in our community school as a day that people, the kids participate in, so that I do support and feel that that is perhaps how our community supports it the best in the school system and in teachers and kids supporting it together.
At the more local level, you mean?
At the more local level, yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? No? On the question then, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.9, Cash Creek Elementary School. And I would move that we donate a family swimming pass to the parent advisory council at Cash Creek Elementary School. Second, Council Anderson, thank you. I will just mention that it has been our habit since, well, since I was on council in 2014, to donate a family swimming pass to the first Ashcroft Elementary, then Desert Sands Community School Fun Fair. Unfortunately, the fun fair looks like it will be canceled for this year unless they can find some new volunteers. So even if the fun fair does go ahead, which I hope it does, this is a donation we're accustomed to making. Any further discussion? No? On the question then, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. And item 5.10, Ashcroft Curling Club Arena Use Request for a Fun Curling Day on March 9th. Council Anstead.
I'd make, I'd like to make motion that we move forward with free use of the arena for March 9th, and pre-set up in March 10th so they can have a fun day of curling, get some curling in this year.
Okay. Thank you, Council Anderson, second. Any discussion on this? Council Davenport.
There was some information about insurance that, is there something to be discussed?
I believe we are waiting for their insurance. We are waiting for the documentation.
Your Worship, we have got a copy of their insurance. There needs to be a slight bit more discussion on it, just to make sure that they aren't covered under the arena and not just for their building, but they have proved that they do have updated insurance. We just have to verify some of it.
Great, thank you very much for the clarification. Any further discussion? No? On the question then, all those in favor, opposed, carried. We have three, we have information correspondence here bridging to literacy. Thank you for sponsoring the Family Day Weekend Free Skate for Family Literacy Week. Aren't good to go, thank you very much. All right, we move on to council reports. I have a report there, and just a couple of things to add. The TNRD items, I was writing that before the meetings actually took place, which is always slightly dangerous. One thing that was not brought up in the presentation from head librarian Judy Moore, who talked about the need for a new library in Kamloops in the southwest Aberdeen area, is that the Ashcroft Library is scheduled for interior refurbishment and an overhaul in 2020. So they're looking at freshening it up, possibly making a different use of the meeting room at the back, freshening up the children's spaces, and basically bringing the library's interior functionality more into line with what a library provides in 2020. So it was about four years ago that they freshened up the exterior, so now they want to do the interior, so that's good news for Ashcroft. Also heard from Vicki Keller, who's the film commissioner of the TNRD, that Lisa Bear, who is the Minister of Culture for the province of B.C., would like to have a film meeting with stakeholders in the area, and she would like that meeting to be in Ashcroft. That is scheduled right now for Friday, March 20th, and she would like to see some grassroots stakeholders, so rather than the high-level people in Kelowna-Kamloops, she would like to see people who are on the ground here in Ashcroft, working in the film industry, whether people have worked security, PAs.
Background.
Background. I think it's to see what the film industry looks like once you get away from the major centers. So that's very exciting, so that was very fresh on Thursday, Friday. Vicki was going to be hearing from the ministry today to get some more information. I haven't heard from her yet. And then the final thing, speaking while we're on a film theme, is that we have received, we, the village, have received a check for $5,000 from Gravity Productions, which is the production company doing the Twilight Zone, and they had been, they wanted to leave a legacy, as Chris, the location manager, said at the special council meeting. And I understand they were given a list of a few items from the village in consultation with staff and crew, and they have presented us with $5,000 to buy shade sails for the pool. So this is apparently something the lifeguards have wanted for some time because of the distinct lack of shade at the Ashcroft Pool, and the umbrellas just don't cut it up on the stands, as I'm sure Council Davenport remembers from her time there. So those, I'm hoping, I don't know, will they be going in this year, possibly, maybe?
Your Worship, we're in the process of getting pricing to it, but we're also looking, we just set a ballpark price of around $20,000 investment. Yeah, they're not cheap, and we're looking for more of what they call a Roma shade, which is something that could be pulled back and forth, because a sales shade is spammed out in me too hard for crews and everything else and staff to actually put them up, take them down, and everything. Going to get pricing, and we're talking to a company, and they're, revels though to be.
Thank you very much. And just a further addition to my Historic Hat Creek report. Historic Hat Creek, there was some confusion around whether the statutory pointies from the local governments were able to send an alternate if they were not able to attend, and that has been clarified that, yes, they can. So the Friends of Historic Hat Creek are now in the process of reaching out to the communities just to make sure that they know who the principal and who the alternate is. So it's, we've already sent them a letter, and it was from myself and Council Anderson as the alternate, so, but they have clarified, there was some confusion, shall we say, around that. Anything further, any questions, or anything further for members of council to report? No? Resolutions released from closed meeting, we have none. And so now we move on to question period. Are there any questions from anyone in the gallery? All right, first question, and could you please just, for once only, for the record, state your name and address before asking your question?
This is Glory Emergence. And my address, 301 Rattles Lake Road.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking at the procedural bylaw, and I want to thank you, Mayor Roden, for the suggestions that you've made. I just have a question about the Committee of the Whole on page 54.
Wait, I'm sorry, 54?
54, not of the whole package, I'm, 54.
54 of the procedural bylaw?
I believe that's what it is. Where it talks about the Committee of the Whole.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that, that's part of the staff report, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, under discussion. So I'm just wondering, first of all, is the Committee of the Whole meetings, will they still be Committee of the Whole meetings? Because there was some discussion about integrating it into a regular meeting.
There will be, like, there will be Committee of the Whole meetings as there was tonight, where CFO Balla had a presentation for us, and we discussed the economic development policy or strategy. In future, delegations will be part of the regular meeting of council as the SOG alliance was tonight.
That's always been the case, but so there still will be two separate meetings?
When occasion calls for it, there will be, yes.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, in the asset management plan, it did say something about the communication plan, and in that communication plan, it said, you know, to engage the public as much as possible, involve people, there's a lot of public expertise out there, and adopt a sustainable approval, adopting a sustainable approach should be garnered on a foundation of trust and open dialogue. And as the procedural bylaw exists right now, there is the, well, it says right here at the very bottom, there is the possibility of dialogue between the public in the gallery and the Committee of the Whole. That's in the procedural bylaw that exists right now. With this new procedural bylaw, that means the public in the gallery will not have a chance to engage at all during the Committee of the Whole. It would just be the counselors and the mayor. And I'm just wondering if council will consider adding that engagement aspect with the public in the gallery.
So something like tonight's Committee of the Whole, for example, said that there would be question period if time permits?
No.
For tonight's?
Where it's, in the procedural bylaw right now, there is the definition of Committee of the Whole, and their one definition is the council has the freedom to discuss openly without motion. And the other aspect of it is it is to encourage dialogue between the delegations as well as public in the gallery, the public in the gallery.
That's in the current one, you mean?
That's right.
Right. So what you're suggesting, what I meant was, you would like to see in the new one something that says, for example, what it said on tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting, questions received from the public if time permits?
Yes, I guess that would be.
Okay. Thank you.
The dialogue, yes.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes? Name an address, please, I know your name, I don't know your address. Riverside Drive.
Alda Jones, 1440 Riverside Drive. Just wondering, I know there's been three quotes submitted to, for the Curling Club, just wondering if there's a timeline on the decision as to what quote we're going to be deciding and moving forward?
For the children, you mean?
Yeah.
Right. Any information on that? I mean, really, is it contingent on us getting the grant funding?
The budget is contingent on the grant funding, Your Worship, but in terms of timeline, I think this council resolution will be sent right away. So tomorrow, we'll go out to NBIT, and then we'll wait for a response and move forward. It also depends on our, on our, how busy public works is with everything. We do realize there's urgency, and there's a desire in the community to get moving on this. But it does change our budget. Our budget approval was $470,000 overall, and without that grant, of course, it would go up by $30,000.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer the question, sort of? No?
So, sorry, Your Worship, the timeline is indefinite, but we're working with it.
So I think, yeah, we realize there's urgency, but we're still trying to get the funding ducks in, we're still trying to get the funding ducks in a row, so. Any other questions from the gallery? Yes?
Janice Mall, 1350 Lester Avenue. When they were discussing about the Curling Club getting to use the arena for a fun night, and would we not be covered underneath the village's arena insurance policy?
Anyone have a question for that? CFO Balla?
Your Worship, the arena is covered under normal usage. This is a special event, so we always ask for special event policies and see what the coverage is. So every, every special event organized by a group, we look for other coverage.
So that would be the fall fair, the graduation ceremony there, anything like that?
Your Worship, even when somebody rents the arena for a special fund, birthday party, whenever, they have to purchase a special insurance to cover themselves under that, certainly because it's not an entity of the village, and it is not a sort of function that was outlaid by council.
Thank you. Does that answer the question? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Do I have to state my name again?
No. Once is enough.
At the last Committee of the Whole meeting, there was not the opportunity for the public to have engagement, and I was just, that was with the draft budget, so I just would like to ask if I can ask a question about the draft budget now, since it was in the minutes.
Okay, you can ask the one question.
Okay, so the question is, the budget for sidewalks, transport in sidewalks, was $25,000 for 2017, and I think there was like $6,000 of it spent. And then the next year, it was $20,000, and $2,000 or $6,000 was spent. And the next year, 2019, $15,000 and $6,000 was spent, and this year is $15,000. So the budget for sidewalks has been going down and down. We don't spend the amount for it, and I'm just wondering if council will consider spending what's budgeted for sidewalks by having, you know, use that money so that we get a few feet of sidewalks every year? Because right now, I think the little bit that is being spent, and it's not even close to the budgeted amount, is just improving a few curves and is not adding to the pathway in the village.
Okay, thank you. I mean, we, there will be a public, at least one public budget meeting coming up, so that will be coming up. Do we have a tentative date for that yet, CFO Balla?
Yes, Your Worship, it was in the, the town hall is in the calendar.
Right. So that is March, no, April, I don't have it.
Your Worship, we also, the planning session last council day was also a budget discussion that was open for public and enabled dialogue.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No? Yes? No? All right.
Was there a date?
Do you want to know that?
The plan?
By the date?
I'm just going to see if I've got my, no, I've got 20.
It was on the, it's on the posted schedule of events, our scheduled meetings, yes.
So it's on our website as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on the village, I don't have the calendar for 2020. It has been published on the village website, so you can take a look there. Or if you can give me two minutes after the meeting, I can find the date for you. All right, any other questions? No? All right, then, we do not have a need to go into a closed session, so I will entertain a motion to terminate this meeting of Ashcroft Council. Council, okay, I'm Council Davenport first, and Council Anstead first, and Council Anstead second. All right. All those in favor, opposed, carried.